Call the meeting to order on Wednesday, February 19, 2025, of the Hanover Borough Finance and Personnel Committee. First thing we will do is public comment, and for the first public comment, we have Mr. Holt, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking through your agenda, there's a lot, three units scant. Main Street Hanover budget shows something that I brought up last year, and I brought up again, I'll bring up again this year, they don't need $40,000 of Borough budget money. They had two, over a quarter of a million dollars in just, last year, sitting when they came and was asking us for 40,000, and I just don't see where the Borough can afford to be handing it out. Now they have over 400,000 in assets. So I think when you look at the budget, you have to consider, it's small peanuts in the grand scheme of things, but it all adds up. I think there should be a public hearing before there's any further action on the master plan at the Long Arm Reservoir. It's a massive change, it's a massive abuse of undeveloped property, relatively undeveloped property, and I think there should be a public hearing, a well-advertised public hearing, and where you just invite more than a few people by email and have a real discussion about what the community really wants there, and if they really like the idea of spending $145,000 on a dock in a handicap access kayak rental that's going to benefit essentially I hope when you do the 44 Frederick Street budget bidding process, it's going to be more transparent, and that the public, and even some of the council members, are going to actually get to see what we got for the money, because we still haven't been able to see the bidding documents for 33 Frederick Street, and that's just annoying, because that's a public document, but it's hidden, and you can't retrieve it easily. We're going to remedy that. And last, I think this contract with Susquehanna Outfitters, again, it seems like it's a favored fair-haired child, it's somebody's favorite, and that should be put out for a public bid, and not just awarded without a no-bid exclusive contract, and I'm hoping that you'll get more than $700 worth of revenues from using a resources for such kind of a frivolous thing. But there shouldn't be any more no-bid contracts, particularly for five years. So, a little... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Yeah.
I only see one person online, and I know that person, he works for us.
No, no, no. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to, we had no executive session, so we have a presentation from Main Street Hanover, please.
I went ahead and passed out this packet to you guys, you have this information, as I overdo our overview of this presentation. First and foremost, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight, it is an honor to present to you as the Executive Director of Main Street Hanover, and share the exciting progress that we've made this past year, as well as our vision for future downtown. At Main Street Hanover, our mission is clear, to expand the economic capacity of downtown Hanover, improving the business environment, enhancing the quality of place, and fostering a vibrant and engaged community. As a nationally accredited Main Street program, we are committed to making downtown Hanover a destination for residents, for businesses, and visitors alike. For this presentation, since this will be the first February one that I'll be doing for you guys, I kind of have done a 2024 overview, just to kind of go over what our statistics are, and the progress that we've made. So over the past year, we have made significant strides in strengthening our downtown district, and 2024 alone, we welcomed 12 new businesses to downtown, including eateries, retail shops, and service providers. Businesses like Grillilla and Little Fox Coffee and Books are bringing new energy and variety to our community. We have also seen an increase in our social media engagement, reaching nearly over 24,000 accounts, and generating over 66 impressions with our marketing and ads, and that specifically targets people within a 25-mile radius, but attending on our ads, we really try to focus on the local people, to really get people engaged in what's happening in their own community. Our marketing efforts have been instrumental in increasing visibility for our merchants. With the release of the Explore Downtown brochure, that is both English and Spanish, a new fun and colorful downtown map, and engaging social media campaigns, we are making it easier than ever for residents and visitors to navigate and enjoy downtown Hanover. Additionally, we have focused on creating memorable experiences through events and programming. So as we did the Christmas in Hanover celebration, I'm excited to tell you that over 2,700 children visited Santa's cabin this past year, for free, you know, that's an opportunity, and that's just the kids that sit on Santa's lap and ask for wishes, that doesn't include the parents, grandparents, relatives, everybody who tags along for family photos.
What was it, 2,400?
2,700.
2,700, congratulations.
Thank you. Additionally, we sold out our hot, our first annual hot chocolate and cookie stroll, you know, and a lot of, we've had feedback from businesses that many of the people who participated in that have returned post-stroll to shop and patronize them, which is exciting. The Second Saturday Initiative continues to grow, with events like, in March, we'll have our Four Leaf Clover Scavenger Hunt, that's a free event, it's family-friendly, you just go around to the different businesses, find the Four Leaf Clover, get your little card stamped, and then once you bring that back to the Main Street tent, you get entered in a free drawing for a basket that has all downtown business products in it, so really trying to highlight what we have. The success of Main Street Hanover would not be possible without the dedication of our volunteers and our partners, and 2024, our volunteers contributed nearly 400 hours of their time to support our events and initiatives. We are grateful to our partners, including the Borough of Hanover, the Hanover Area Chamber of Commerce, and our generous donors who continue to invest in our mission. Another exciting development that we recently were working on with the Borough, specifically with Borough staff, Eric Maines, A.J. Graham, and Matt Perkins, was to apply for a Lowe's Hometowns grant, so if that grant is awarded, it'll allow us to finish the Goodfield Stream Stabilization Project by adding a new wood and timber guide rail system along the restored stream. This grant specifically was limited to 501(c)(3) statuses, so that's something that we're able to partner with the Borough on, to better alleviate some of those and leverage some of those opportunities. As you know, they know the projects, you know, they're the ones who are doing the day-to-day operations of repairing things, but we have that status that we can help apply. So our goal is to continue to find other grants that have this type of leverage, and continue to apply for them in the future. As we look forward to 2025, our focus remains on sustainability and expansion. We are actively working on guided history and architecture walking tours, which was supported by a grant from the Rotary, to further highlight the rich history of Hanover. Additionally, we are continuing our work on the heart of Hanover Trails, an interactive and informative experience that will connect visitors with the town's Civil War heritage and other historical highlights. Our goal for that is to really make that accessible to our school systems, providing PowerPoints of the itineraries that we already have prepared, and have that as an opportunity for teachers alike to kind of share what's in the local history that's happening. As a call to action, I want to take a moment just to invite each of you, I know a lot of you are already patronizing, you're supporting the downtown businesses, whether it's attending events, volunteering your time, shopping locally, or spreading the word about the great things happening in downtown Hanover, your support is essential to our success, and together we can continue to build a thriving, vibrant community that honors our history while embracing a bright and prosperous future. Thank you, I wanted to keep this short and sweet, but thank you so much for your time and your support and your dedication to our town. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them now or after adjournment.
Well, mine are going to be very easy.
Okay.
You're going to like this. Okay, so you have two events scheduled, one for March, for family-friendly, which I'm happy about, and the Folks' and Flower Arts Festival.
Yes.
Now, that's for anybody, right?
Correct, that is for anybody.
All right, and now, can you explain the adult egg hunt? What's this all about?
Yeah, so that event is going to be a part of a bigger event, so the Hanover Area Chamber of Commerce, they really want to, you know, as they host Snack Town Street Fair, and then also Snack Town Fall Fest, they really wanted to add a third community event in the spring for people, so that's going to be Snack Town Spring Fling. So their aspect of that, they're going to be handling a free kids' egg hunt, that'll be out at Mal Field, and then Main Street's part is, we're doing an adult egg hunt. So it'll be for adults to travel to the different businesses, you'll find the golden egg, you'll get prizes, that kind of stuff, ranging from candy to beer tokens, that kind of thing.
And there was another one here, oh, the barbecue and brew stroll. And the only reason I'm asking this, because, you know, when you had the brew stroll, separate stroll, I'm really not in favor of families being downtown at that time, that's for adult pleasure. But at, from what time to what time? I don't see times on here, is it an all-day affair for like...
No, so it is a limited time, I believe that one is 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM, so it's only a two-hour window, we want to keep stuff limited, and we try to do those types of events after lunchtime with the hopes that people have some food in their stomach.
Okay, so you have like a two-hour event?
Yeah.
For the barbecue and brew stroll, and then after that, families could feel free.
Absolutely.
Did you have that on any of your advertisements? When you run these down for events, do you give times that they're going to be held so that families would know when they...
Yeah, absolutely, and all of that is available on our website right now, so if you go to our website and hit the little events tab, you could see everything planned out for all of 2025.
Well, I have questions from people that don't have computers.
That's totally fine.
Okay, so...
I will print you whatever you need, darling.
You're a good girl, thank you. Okay, and I noticed that under the Hanover Main Street funding, being that we have taxpayers' money involved in the Main Street, and can you let me know, I think we talked about it last time, how much money per year goes out toward improving the facade of downtown, basically, approximately, can you give that to me?
Um, I hate to give just a random number, I can pull a more specific report for you, but it is a large percentage, but I hate to give out numbers that I can't 100%.
See, someone said 19,000 for last year, and that's why I'm asking.
It would still be within that range, definitely.
Would it be?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay, and do they have to come to you, do the businesses have to, do they call you if they need help with, say, repainting or restructuring their front, and how do they apply? I think when we're sitting here, people can come online that do have that availability, and my questions, you're answering, and they will know so that they, if they haven't known before, they will know by tonight.
Yeah, absolutely, so we have a couple of different programs, so one of them, if it's specifically for facade improvements, they would, when the round is open, almost like a regular grant would be, they would come to us, it's a simple application, we help them fill it out, and then it goes to PDC, and they kind of look over everything, ask more questions if needed, and then either gets awarded. Now that is a reimbursement grant, so they have to purchase everything, submit the receipts to us, and then they get reimbursed for it. But then we also work with Bloom Empowerment Center, they do typically two to three grant rounds a year, and those are for not only facade, but even, like, for example, Let's Play game, Games and Hobbies, they got all their new gaming tables through applying for a grant for that, and that one is typically awarded, I think the range is between 2,500 to 5,000 is the cap for that grant.
Okay.
But either way, they can reach out to us.
They're matching grants, aren't they not?
Um, not Bloom, Blooms isn't, I would have to double-check, it depends on specifically, you know, how a grant with every checkbox has a different, you know, but again, this is something that whenever, if a business moves into downtown, they get a Welcome to Downtown Business Packet, which talks about all these different resources as well, but then we've sent out a monthly e-newsletter that talks about when the grants are opening and that kind of stuff.
So these are all sent...
So we really try to get the word out, yeah.
These are sent, and they're all, they're sent specifically to the Main Street area for the businesses?
Whoever, yep.
And the only reason I'm asking this, when paint starts to pill off of buildings, is that addressed? Because we do have that problem downtown right now, is it up to the individual owner of that building to, is there a code enforcement on that?
That's not what Main Street Hanover does.
No, 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 I'm not, I know what Main Street does, but it's also for improving facade of the buildings.
Like, would we ask them, or like, give them some more information to try to push them?
And then say, you know, we do have this available, if you wish to apply for it.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, because I've, I mean, things seem to be going quite well with this, but I've noticed that there's some buildings in Main, in Main Street that are, the paint's peeling, and actually, it should have never been painted to begin with, okay, it was brick that was produced in order to absorb the water naturally, and so, no, I was just curious, because you want to keep the appearance of the downtown up.
Absolutely.
I know that's one of your main interests, right?
Absolutely, yeah, we don't have any type of, we can't force anybody to do anything, but we can certainly show, like, share our resources and be like, this is an option.
They know that they have the option.
Yeah, absolutely.
What did you say, Tim?
I said they know that they have that option, to apply for something for help if they need it.
Well, I wanted to make sure they all did, and, you know, and then I asked myself, well, if we have paint peeling, is there a problem financially, and do we have, does Main Street have that option to help them? If you've noticed, because when you start getting buildings where it looks rundown, it sort of is sort of a catch-me-all disease, where it goes from one to the other, and since everybody's working so hard on this project, I just think that we should do the very best we can to keep it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make a comment and thank Main Street for highlighting businesses, I'm sure businesses are real happy, you see that pretty frequently, and the map that you've created in downtown Hanover lists all the businesses, so that should keep the businesses happy, so thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that was a good idea.
Thank you.
I looked at everything, it was a good job done.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, I'll be looking for a motion.
Motion approved the consent agenda, so moved?
How about a second?
Seconded.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted, I wanted to know when your Master Site Development Plan Study Committee meets? Is there, are there dates when you guys are meeting? That is 5.06.
I think this is just setting up the committee to get that started.
Is that what that is?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
It's just like a step one, that's, that's say we're going to do this committee.
Oh, okay, all right.
And then we'll start working that process.
All righty, I got it.
Not to speak for you, Mr. Rekart, but I assume that's what you mean.
Okay, yeah, because that was, that's kind of a, yeah, I'd like to be a part of that.
There, I just said to Barb, there are public meters to care, there are public meetings as well as a part of that.
Right, correct. Okay. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, then I'll call the roll.
Oh, now, wait a minute. Whoa, 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 okay, the only, I just talked to...
A.J. Graham?
Thank you. Yeah, and I talked, I also talked with you on the, how many playgrounds we have, and you said we had approximately eight playgrounds, right?
Correct.
Right, and they took, and you took the four largest used playgrounds for the program, correct? And then I said to him, well, you should have been over there, I took my grandchild over there one day, and I mean, it was loaded to the hill. So do, how do we take recount on those, how do we take counts?
So I'll let our park director, Matt Perkins, address that, and how we came up with those locations.
How's that for getting thrown into the fire?
Thanks, A.J. Graham.
Glad you're here.
Yeah.
Where are you at?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the four locations are chosen because of the attendance at those.
Right, that's what, but it's...
Yes, so, and we are relocating the one to Union Park, because they were using Hanover Street Elementary as one of their, as the fourth location, and because it's just a black topped area and doesn't have any shade, doesn't have any trees, it's just basically a black top area, we decided to work with the Y to relocate that one for two reasons. One, it's going to go to a playground that's brand-new, second, there's going to be a pavilion by June, which they'll be able to utilize for shelter and shade, and three...
Similar to the one that's down there on Mal Avenue.
Yes, it'll be almost exactly a duplicate of what's at Mal Field.
Right.
And then third, because there isn't a commu, there isn't a playground that's serving that side of the street, for lack of a better term, everything was, all four of the playgrounds were on one side of Baltimore Street, this puts one on the opposite side of Baltimore Street for that part of the community to access.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at there, and this is actually Tim's ward, but we have so many children in Ward Five, and in his ward also, that when I went down, I was kind of shocked, okay? Now, there was a reason why it was zero growth at one point, can we add, or can you add to that, put a little check mark, to double back on Bear Avenue?
For 25, or moving forward in 26?
Yeah, we have a large amount of children, Hispanic particularly, that use that park during the summer, and it was overloaded this year, in fact, they were climbing over everything.
Okay.
Yeah, they were practicing their skills, and I kept thinking, oh, where'd all these children come from?
Yep.
But where you have zero amount could be completely wiped out the following year, so can we keep tabs of that, please?
We can.
And the big thing is just making sure the Y can hire enough kids for the program.
Hire enough people, and the Hanover Street Elementary one was actually very poorly attended, which would have been the one closest to Bear Avenue Playground. There were days that when we checked in, there were maybe one or two kids there, so we thought that this would maybe help increase the numbers by moving it.
Well, I'm just looking at the travel time from where Bear Avenue is, and how far those children have to go to reach Mal Avenue.
Yep.
And then on the other hand, also, they're located almost smack dab in the middle, okay, so if they, if they want to go to a playground, they either have to go to Union Park, I think now it's called.
Yes.
That's a walk, and then they have to take a nice jaunt down to Mal.
To Mal.
So maybe we can meet a happy medium.
Yeah, we can definitely check with the Y and see if that can be a fifth one added.
Thank you, back. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Not hearing any, we'll call the, call for the vote, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Department of Water Resources, 0.01, pretty cut and dry there, all the information was in our packet, I'll be looking for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
And a second? Roll in second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Movement on the pass.
Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next is pretty cut and dry also, we all know what chronic wasting disease is in deer, be looking for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Barb, looking for a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes, how much is being spent on this five-year licensing agreement with the kayaks and canoes?
We're not, we're not, we're not down there.
Darlene, Darlene.
We're on 6.02, ma'am.
I'm so sorry, I jumped the gun.
Yeah.
Well, then you know what I'm up to.
I just wanted to make counsel aware that because of the nature of this contract, we are asking for approval of it tonight, so this will not be one that gets bounced to your meeting next week for a subsequent action on it. Because of the short timeline that we have, we're trying to give USDA as much time as possible, so this one's being asked to be approved, one and done tonight.
And it's pretty cut and dry what this is, I mean, yeah, we need to get to it. Right, so, any other discussion on CWD?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, now we...
Okay, moving on to seven, which is Public Works and Facilities, I can briefly describe this, and I might need some help from Mr. Maines, but it's the exact same thing we did at 33 Frederick Street, where we have one prime and everyone worked for the prime, so it makes it a little bit easier as far as who we deal with, we're not dealing with seven or eight different contractors, we're dealing with one, you know, same thing. Did you want to speak to any of this, Eric, or no?
No, just that, like you said, we use this model with the 33 Frederick Street project, and we had a lot of success with it, there were a lot of times where we were able to simply point to the general contractor and say, you deal with it. What we don't want to do is be in a position where we have to manage six different contracts for different trades, it just creates a whole lot of extra work on things, and it creates a lot of risk profile with Borough.
Yes, it does.
Want to make a motion?
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Did we tackle 801?
No, we're just...
No, we're getting there.
We're just getting to, do our number seven.
Are you taking this by A and B, for both motions, on the authorization and the approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, because normally I see you going through 701, and I'm right with you, I approve of it, but you're taking it step by step, okay?
Yes, ma'am, so now we're, now we're on to eight.
All right.
Which is Park and Recreation, and we're on to 8.01.
Well, did we do B? Do we pick that all as one?
It's not one.
Do you want that as one or two?
One.
We did it as one.
Do we have to do it as two?
I just want the minutes to be clear that it's both, because all, all I heard was A, but if, if counsel's clear that it's B.
For clarification, my motion was for voting.
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
Since it wasn't broke out, that's why I did them as one.
Got it.
Okay, so we're finished with seven?
We're finished with 7.01, and we're on to Park and Recreation.
Uh-huh.
Park and Recreation.
Gotcha.
Yeah, 8.01, we had the information in our packet.
Yes.
So we're going to go the way we always do, I'm looking for a motion on this.
Motion.
Okay?
Second.
Second, now, discussion, please.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I have, I have just some, some concerns regarding, you know, I am concerned about urbanizing those, that area there, I just want you to know that it is something that's on my mind, so I am going to start attending some Parks and Recreation meetings, and I do agree with some comments that have been made, that I think the public should be involved, and their tax dollars, what's going on out there, even if it's a good, it's a good message, hey, you know, we're doing this for the kids, or we're doing this for people traveling, or for you to hike, I think the public should be aware of those things, I really do, so that's, just want to make sure I'm saying that on the record.
Yes, ma'am.
I do want to make a point, that the 10-years Park and Rec Plan did have considerable, numerous public involvement, and they did provide input into those reservoir areas as well. So that's the master plan that's been approved by DCNR to move forward with, now you're moving into the next level of details with this, with this money. So the, the master, the master plan, the 10-year plan...
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan, thank you, laid the groundwork as to what would be considered out there.
It's been a while.
Well, it's still available.
It's been a while, that's why I'm saying I think we need to be brought up to speed, and at least know, or be reminded of what's been...
I mean, I would think that the process that Barb and Bill and others, and Matt, would be to do a recap of that, the whole comprehensive plan.
Yeah, even from a... Yeah, even from myself.
Right.
I mean, you know.
Understood, but it is available for reading.
Just picked it apart tonight.
Thank you, Carol. Yeah, my people in my ward are yes and nos on this whole thing, okay? And we, how much money do we have involved for the five-year licensing program? Margie, do you have that information?
We're not paying anything.
We're not paying anything?
No. We're contracting with someone who is providing a service at a reasonable fee to people that don't have boats and kayaks, to come and use a boat and kayak and take their family out on the lake for an hour or three, and then bring the boat or kayak back to Susquehanna Outfitters, and then they leave. They don't have to bring a boat, because they don't have one.
Yeah, and I was aware of that, where my people are upset is that they're actually, they don't mind fishing along the shore, but it's getting in, it's the drinking water of the town. And that's where, well, hey, I'm bringing it to the table to people's thoughts, and...
We don't swim. There's no swimming.
No, I know that, but, but they don't, they don't like movable objects in their drinking water, okay? Like a boat.
People that own a boat.
And I said, "Well, there's no motors involved, there's no gas," and they said, "That doesn't matter."
Right now, though, if you owned your own canoe or kayak, you can go out there.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
So this is only for people who don't own their own canoe or kayak?
This is a new recreation.
Okay, I don't go out there.
It's okay.
Okay, I don't fish. But, okay, so people can bring their own boats and go out and fish. Can they, now, they still have to stick with the paddle boats, they can't use motorized?
They can, they can use an electric motor.
Electric trolling.
Oh, they can?
Electric trolling motor. It goes about, what, five miles an hour?
If that.
If that.
See, this is where you have to bring me up the car.
So, so they, they are allowed to use the little electric ones. They don't make a lot of noise, they're quiet, and they don't go very fast.
Okay.
But they, and then paddle, paddling canoes and kayaks as well.
Right, okay. So we did allow this long before.
It's always been allowed.
Okay, you're saving my hide here. All right, now, on the motor themselves, they carry some type of fuel, right, to get them putt-putt. They don't?
Electr- battery.
No fuel.
Oh, it's all battery-operated? Well, thank you, see? I'm not, I don't ride boats and I don't fish. This is wonderful. So at this point, we allow the people to go out in either motors, run by electric, correct?
Or they're on.
Or by the paddles. And the only thing that we're doing with the kayaks is allowing them to assist people who want to do it but don't have the equipment to do it.
Bingo.
Am I with you?
You got it.
Thank you.
You got it.
That was so easy. And they said they, they started this past year, and they didn't make any money, basically.
They serviced?
Bring me into that.
They serviced 100 families. Let's bring our Park and Rec Director up here.
Just stay up here, Matt.
And remember, the goal, the goal was that they were providing a service, not that we were going to make money on it. That was not our intention.
Okay, so it wasn't to make money, it was just a service?
It's a service.
Okay.
They rented approximately 300 units. So 300 people rented a canoe or a kayak from them.
But for what period of time? Because I don't think they were there the whole year.
Memorial Day through late.
They opened Memorial Day weekend, and then they ran through October. And they also, in October, did some, I think they were calling them full moon cruises, where they were taking people on tours around the lake with a, with a tour leader in the kayaks.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm now educated.
Anything else?
Thank you, Margie.
Any other discussion on 8.01? Okay, not seeing any? Make a motion?
Second?
Thank you.
Third?
Okay. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Yep, motion carries. Moving on to nine, my favorite part of reading these. 9.10, ratifying building construction change order updates.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
I have to read them.
Do you?
The solicitor told me I had to read them. Is that correct still? Yes.
Nothing's changed?
Please, please read it.
May we approve them all in one motion?
I, I think.
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah.
But I need to read them aloud.
Okay. A, change order number 17, and the amount of $10,268 to reconfigure electric door access system, emergency egress. B, change order number 20, and the amount of $567 to reconfigure safety feature of stair treads, stair C. C, change order number 26, $2,682 to connect exterior lighting to automatic clock system. D, change order number 29, $995 to relocate power and data for building automation panel to room 032. E, change order number 32, this is a credit, $1,232 for removal of sanitary cleanout in rooms 29 and 30. F, change order number 33, credit amount of $5,555 for reconfiguring exterior lower metal panel finish detail. G, change order number 39, credit and the amount of $5,106 for removal of roller plan storage systems for room 11. And that would be it.
Sue motion.
Thank you. Second? Okay, any discussion?
The net of the two is, what, about?
$1,700.
$1,700 to the negative?
$2,600.
$2,600.
So $3,000 to the...
I will reiterate one more time that they are, they're doing an outstanding job on these, on the buildings, in these meetings. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 9.02, approved fire pension plan amendment. This was pretty cut and dry in our thing. I'd be looking for a motion.
Sue motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 9.03, approve recodification of Hanover Borough Code E360, budgeted. This item was budgeted. So pretty cut and dry, same thing, and it was all in our paperwork. It was a great reading. I'd be looking for a motion for that, please.
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to reports of council members. I think Barb had something to say.
I do. At your place, you found a memo from me, but it's really from my committee. One of our goals on our committee is to come up with a mission, vision, and values and a tagline. And Valer's done a great job, Valer, or email, I'm sure he did, I don't know who did it, but it's great. It's a really nice exercise, it's how you get to our mission, our purpose, and our values. So I'm asking you to take a look at that, sort of like homework. You can hand it in March 2nd at our meet and greet, then we'll compile the results. We'll still sort of suffer through it till we get to the end, but this is a nice exercise as to find out, figure out how we add to our mission, values, and our tagline. And I suggest what you might want to do is Google codes or missions, get some ideas too, they'll give you some good ideas, and get some adjectives or verbs to help you describe this. So thank you for the help on this. This will be due March 2nd. Anything else, Carol? Anything else?
No.
No?
That was...
Okay, Scott, is that everything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other reports of council members? Okay, management reports, nothing. Yeah, nothing. Correspondence and stuff was in our packet. Moving on to number 13, which is additional public comment.
You can take mine away. I'm going to take it, Barbara, instead.
Thanks.
Okay, you're on your spot. Yep, yep, sure, we're starting with you.
Justin, I want to say, when you're talking about all the $1,000 that the people made in the business with the kayaks, I think you've got to understand that has meant a lot to the community. Those guys out there are so nice, and they'll help everyone with everything, and they have to all the time, because there's loose kids, loose dogs, don't tell Matt, he gets upset about that, people losing keys, and those two, the, the guys there are just, they're not, they're often not on time, and they're young, and they're very cute, and all the girls, the teenage girls love to go flirt with them, but I, I just think it's really a positive thing to have that part of our community. I, I, we go out there almost every single day and just have so much fun, and we always go talk to them, and just, Matt or whoever thought of it gets a gold star on their Mother Goose chart.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Greg.
All right, moving on to Billy Lamb.
Okay, I have two problems.
Yes, ma'am.
One is, I moved on to 18 Stock Street and lived in a second-floor apartment. I moved in there in 2021. There was things wrong with the apartment, but my rent was reasonable, I didn't say nothing, until the spare room ceiling, three years after I lived here, started leaking water on my furniture. I went to the landlady, they patched the whole window ceiling, but the roof still was leaking down through, and it came down again. So I came over to the code enforcement officer because of my pastor telling me to, to do something. The people from church also called, nothing was ever done. The code officer came, told the truce down, because they put the house up for sale in the meantime, to fix it. Well, they patched it again, the new owners took over, started leaking again. It's, it's a big hole in there. I now moved out of there, because if I had stayed there, I wouldn't be here. And the code officer, I came over and showed him the new pictures of what it looked like with the new people, and nothing was done. There was a lot of other things I let go, but I couldn't let go of my ceiling coming in or my furniture. So I moved out. I moved into a wonderful place, and the code officer still did nothing. And he's known it, and he's seen the pictures, and it was not only me complaining, members of my church, including my pastor, called and complained about my living conditions, that the mess was there, I came home from surgery, the mess was there, and no one cleaned it up.
And just, just to reiterate, that was 18 Stock Street, you thought?
18 Stock Street, apartment two.
All right, thank you.
And, and the smoke detector, the electric one kept going off, that was the only one in the house. So the truce down took it down, said they got it fixed. The new owners took over, the truce down put it up, and it still kept going off. She took it down and never fixed it. The wires were just hanging. Being a retired firefighter, that's a fire hazard. So then I got a car gift to me. I had it less than a month, and it was hit. It was illegally parked. I called the 911 at eight, a little after eight. I thought it was gunshots from the noise, because it hit twice. I called, they were riding the neighborhood, didn't see nothing. Seven o'clock the next morning, Officer Ketterling called me and asked me if I owned the such-and-such car. I said, "Yes." I went out. Somebody had hit the back tail light of the car, and the back windshield was shattered. Blood was everywhere. They informed me, they found the person who hit it was a motorized bicycle, and they found him at the hospital. I never got a report of anything. Two weeks later, I come over and got the report from the secretary, who even the officer was, I didn't even know who the officer was that was at the scene of the accident. I don't understand how a guy on a motorized bike in 10 minutes got up on his bike, bleeding out the neck, and got through the hospital, and I still don't know who that gentleman was that hit my car. I was informed there was nothing the police could do. But I don't know who he is, so I couldn't do nothing if I wanted. Now, that's been since 9/24. I still have no information. The only information I have from the police officer is what the secretary gave me when I come over two weeks later. Then, December 24th, at 11:30 at night, a drunk driver came down Eichelberger the wrong way, right before the stop sign, hit the parked car in front of me, pushed it into mine, and totaled both cars. Came within inches of pushing me into the third parked car. The police officer got us awake, I went out, looked at everything. He said someone will be in touch with me the next day with the information. I finally, two days later, a friend brought me over here, and I got the information from a very nice detective who was working at the desk. He's the one who told me to file a complaint. I filed it. I got out to the car, and a lieutenant called me, explaining everything would be, giving me the information and all. I never got nothing. That evening, the sergeant called me, told me everything would be taken care of, he apologized for everything, not getting the proper information and care. I still have none information. I had to get the information from the detective who was working at the desk of who hit my car the second time. Then the first car that was hit, the people that lived up the street, it was their car, their insurance company contacted me a week after it happened to see if I had any information, because the police department would not respond back to their calls. They had no idea who she was.
And this took place at 656 Broadway?
No, this took place with 18 Stock Street. And I eventually, people, because of my living conditions at Stock Street, and the way I felt, and the way the new landlady was treating me, blaming me for every little thing that happened, they got me out of there, because I wouldn't be here, because my mental abilities just couldn't handle no more.
Yep. Well, I can tell you that I'll pass this information along to the right people.
You know, I can understand they're busy and all, but I've lived there for, since '21, and they drag race down Stock Street, they, they drag race, they don't stop at the stop sign, and if you need a police officer, go to any parking lot or any alley, and they're sitting there talking to each other or sleeping. And I'm sorry, I don't pay taxes because I rent, and I'm on social security. But if I was a property owner and paid taxes, I'd be furious, because I'm paying their salary.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're, they're not doing their job. And as far as I'm concerned, people on Stock Street, they drive, the majority think the speed limit says 52, not 25.[1638.02]
Yes, ma'am. I will pass this information along.
And I even told the sergeant, if I was one of the rich people that lived in the big house, would I be treated any better? And he assured me I would not. Well, if they're getting treated this way, they ought to be in here complaining too. And I have the officer's name. The sergeant was Morterson or whatever, however you pronounce it.
I wrote the notes on there that you gave me, all the information.
But I mean, I have all the, their badge numbers and everything, but I wasn't going to say nothing. I was told by my church members that I had to speak up because it was bothering me.
Yep, that, we will, we will definitely address it.
I felt like less of a person because of the way I was treated. I lost the car that was given to me as a gift from a dying lady in six months, twice.
Yep, we will address it. We just pass that information to our borough manager and she'll be in contact with you or someone will. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Sandy Mau.
Okay, first off, under 505 Guthrie Memorial Library, it's referencing a resolution. Where can that resolution be found? Where can I locate it?
It was online, published online. It was published online with, with the packet of information for this evening's meeting.
Well, there, I'm still waiting to see that packet where the library governors meeting, the manager's report was included in with those minutes so that we could not see them. So I don't know why I'm having such a difficult time going on to your site and locating this information. We will try again. What is the status of the HVAC grant? And is it in an omnibus account or is it in a separate account?
That I don't know. I mean, we can find an answer for her on that, I would assume.
I mean, we didn't get reimbursed yet, did we?
No.
We, we didn't, we didn't do the work yet. What we're working on is trying to get another grant that will couple with that grant so that we can do the whole system at once. Because right now, we can only do part of it.
So none of the HVAC grant was used for the current remodeling?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay. Where did that money come from? To do the remodeling?
We're doing, there's no money been spent, really, just our maintenance budget.
Okay, so you didn't go and buy paint? You already had paint on?
It's part of our maintenance budget.
Okay. Then I was told that you do not have to put anything out for bid because you did the work in-house, Public Works Department.
Yes.
That's correct?
That's correct.
Public Works has uniforms, does it not, to identify them as borough employees? I only saw one individual going in there wearing a Hanover Borough uniform. Well, a follow-up on the $500,000. What I could find so far is that it was supposedly connected to PennDOT and there was supposed to be a light placed on Carlow, at the intersection of Carlow Street, Library Place, and High or Third Street. Again, that didn't, evidently did not come about. So there's still a question as to what that $500,000 in the overrun budget was.
All right, thank you very much.
Here's this. Sandy, if you'd like this.
Mr. Holt?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. It's interesting to listen to the discussion about the master plan for recreation and the discussion. And there was never anything in the master plan about boating and commercial boating operations out there. None of those details were in it. Mostly it talked about economic and business driver and how it could be used to make money. I also find it interesting that this five-year exclusive no-bid sole right license agreement was awarded with no review by the Recreation Committee. It wasn't even discussed, maybe because they didn't have a quorum last month. And I just think there needs to be a public hearing on what you're going to do out there on those reservoir properties. Now, you say, well, it's only boats and kayaks, but if you go out there sailboarding, as I've seen, and somebody falls in the water, well, you know, they take an inconvenient swim, but they do swim. And I just think you need to think about that this is the current and future reservoir water resources, not only this town, but a couple others in this area, and it's critical infrastructure. And it should be treated with some kind of seriousness. And it is a natural resource that you're developing. And there won't be any justification for that, except that you wanted money. And I got to tell you, I'm going to use a phrase not used casually, that's a loss of confidence. And I have a loss of confidence stemming from the Governance Committee's last session in where they talked about the open container law. And that a bunch of businesses were invited, but there wasn't really ample notice given to the public to come and to give comment. And I just heard a lot of people crying over their beer about they've invested so much money and we don't want to hurt business. But the role of government, the first role of government is to protect the people, protect the citizens. And sometimes that makes it a little inconvenient for business. But that's why we give away some of our rights, as the courts have acknowledged. And I just feel that that committee hearing, or meeting, was a setup. It was not straightforward. It wasn't fair. And the public, once again, was left on the short end. And the police chief and I may count differently, but there, there is a problem with, and it's continuing. And you're already up to 10 instances of public drunkenness and DUI so far this year. And I just, and, and it just, it's, it's beyond that. It involves underage drinking, encouraging minors to engage in things they shouldn't be engaged in by adults. And some of them are at the brink of adulthood and most of them are in their teens. And I just think you really need to look seriously at an open container law and stop letting people parade around our neighborhoods like they do with an open container, drinking out in front of our houses or along the side of our houses. And there's nothing we can do about it. It's legal. And so, and people say, well, you should call the police and they'll sue them along. And I'm like, no, because I've already been told by the mayor and the police chief that it's legal. And there's nothing you can do. So it's not going to end. I'm not going to let you go about it. And, I mean, if I have to fight it for 10 years, I will. It's not going to go away. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Tim, can I ask one question here as part of council? On that open container law that Bob's talking about, is the sip and stroll allowed throughout the town? Or is it only allowed on Main Street? I have been totally confused about this. I'm told one thing and then I'm told another. So.
Do you know where she can find that?
I, I don't know. How do we, how do we address this issue?
Could you clarify what you're asking? Because I think what you're saying is where are we allowed to get a drink and walk?
Yes.
We don't have an open container law, so you may do it anywhere in the borough.
Are you serious? Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And people don't know it. When they come out, they're upset.
Okay, so, okay, can I ask one other question?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been informed that there are people who have had the open container. They got in their car and drove out to the mall, out to Eisenhower, the Golden Stretch. Is that permitted?
No.
No.
Well, no, that would be illegal. That would be open container in a motor vehicle.
So, so, so if we don't have any law, do we have a law addressing that they can't take the container and drive? Is that, do we have that in our town?
Statewide.
It's a state law. I know that, but do we abide by?
Yes, we've slated over that.
So how do we, we can't keep tabs of this. So what if, what if the sip and stroll? I'm afraid that the sip and stroll is, is going beyond the sip and stroll. Because I, I read all of the DUIs and, and those, I know, I know, Scott, you want to go home. But I did read all of it. And some of it is, you know, I, I question. But we do have a problem. We do have a problem. And I don't know how to rectify it other than what, I keep saying to all, all of us here, what is the problem with going to a brew house and sitting down and having a drink with your friends, right? Why do you need to sip and stroll with a drink in your hand to the next pub? You know, where you, I don't want to use the word encourage, but where it's every good possibility, which I know it is happening, where they go to their car and they have the brew and no one stops them. Are we going to be? I would feel, no, no, I, I'm questioning it, Tim, because allowing this allows them to go to their car, put the brew in their, in their, their beer can in the holder.
I think, I think, I think we know where you stand on this. And now is not the time to, to discuss this.
Okay, when do we discuss it?
Well, we talked about it governance and you have questions. We can't.
I did.
We can't stop people from doing things, okay? But now is not the time to talk about this. This is not the time.
Why? I, I don't understand.
Because this is not an open forum. Because portion of the meeting is called public comment, not, not council discussion.
I know, Bill, it's no open comment. Okay, I'm going to let this thing rest, but I do, all of us together. I just feel that I do not have a problem with the brew houses. I do not have a problem with you going and meeting with your friends and having your beer and your wine.
We know where you stand.
But I just, I, I know this is going to come to no good.
And, and everyone here is allowed to have an opinion?
Yes, thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Moving on to number 14. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.